Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' Public Meeting, Tuesday, October 15, 2019. The time is now 7:17. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, notice that this meeting was published in the November 29, 2018, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Rogers is absent, excused. Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Petracca?
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Here.
All present mayors except for Commissioner Rogers, he's absent, excused this evening.
Minutes.
We have regular meeting minutes for September 17, 2019. I need a motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
We have executive session minutes for October 1, 2019.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for minutes, Mayor.
Commissioner Evans, best practices?
Yes, Mayor, just each year we have to complete a best practices checklist to submit to the Division of Local Governmental Services. We completed that inventory of the questions for this year. Of the 48 survey questions, we actually were able to answer yes to 41 of them. The questions change, so each year the survey is a little bit different. By answering 41 yes, it actually qualifies us for the full amount of aid that we negotiated with the state under the transitional state aid application. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Communications, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. We have several communications this evening. The first one is Conker Brothers Management, the Old Canal Inn, has submitted an application for an extension of premises for an event to be held Saturday, November 9, 2019, from 12 to 5 at their location to East Passaic Avenue. The second one is the Nutley Education Foundation has submitted an event application for a color run through Kingsland Park on Saturday, October 26, from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. The third one is the Committee to Re-Elect Commissioner Petracca for a social affair permit, and their event is to be held Friday, November 1, 2019, at the Starlight Dance Center located at 7 High Street, from 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. The fourth one is the Friends of Nutley Public Library has submitted a social affair permit for their Nutley Hall of Fame event, which is scheduled for November 17, 2019, from 2:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. at 93 Booth Drive. And the last one is the Nutley Elks has also submitted an application for a social affair permit for their fundraiser event to be held Saturday, October 26, from 7:30 p.m. to 11:30 p.m. at 242 Chestnut Street. I need a motion, please.
Move all five?
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
I just have to abstain on mine, and then I vote aye on the rest.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for communications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're going to do a couple of proclamations. The first proclamation is for Rotary International, and I'm going to read it, then we'll present it to any of the Rotarians that are here today. Whereas Rotary is a global network of 1.2 million individuals comprised of neighbors, friends, leaders, and problem solvers who unite and take action to create lasting change in communities across the globe, and whereas the Rotary motto "Service Above Self" inspires members to provide humanitarian service, follow high ethical standards, and promote goodwill, peace in the world. Whereas Rotary in 1985 launched Polio Plus, and in 1988 established the Global Polio Eradication Initiative to immunize the children of the world against polio, which today includes the World Health Organization, U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. Whereas polio mainly affects children under the age of five, and whereas there is no cure for polio, but it is preventable with a vaccine, whereas polio cases have dropped by 99.9 percent since 1988, and the world stands on the threshold of eradicating the disease. And whereas to date Rotary has contributed more than 1.9 million in countless volunteer hours to protecting more than 2.5 billion children in 122 countries, and whereas Rotary is working to raise an additional $50 million per year, which will be leveraged for the maximum impact by an additional $100 million annually from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. Whereas these efforts are providing much-needed operational support, medical staff, laboratory equipment, and educational materials for health workers and parents. Whereas in addition, Rotary has played a major role in decisions by donor governments to contribute more than $8 billion to the effort. And now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners and Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, recognize October 24, 2019, as World Polio Day, and commends the global network of Rotary organization, including the Nutley Rotary Club, in their efforts to build awareness, fundraise, and encourage governments to donate and support polio eradication efforts around the world. Thank you very much, Rotary. You do a great job with everything else you do in town, and we're proud that we're able to give this proclamation. Commissioners?
Rotary has always been a wonderful organization. I'm very pleased and proud to be part of this proclamation tonight. Please keep up the good work, especially while you do wonderful work for the world. Please keep up your good work for Nutley.
I'd just like to congratulate you not only for what you did as far as a cure for polio is concerned, but for what you do each and every day here in Nutley, the dictionaries for our youngsters in the schools, all the great service work that you do, and all the organizations that you help. It's just wonderful to have such an active Rotary organization here in town, and I'd just like to thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you. I'd like to say congratulations as well. Rotary to me stands for three important words: kindness, loving, and caring. All you guys do, and for many, many years in Nutley, and what you do for our town is really commendable. Thank you.
And you put on a great card show.
That's for sure.
Come on up and take a picture. Don't forget to be...
Yeah.
Our next proclamation is to proclaim October 19, 2019. Coach, it's D-Day for Steve DiGregorio. Commissioner Evans, will you start?
Yes, I will, thank you. Whereas Steve DiGregorio is a graduate of Nutley High School, class of 1979, and Muhlenberg University, class of 1983. And whereas Steve DiGregorio coached at Caldwell High School, Paramus Catholic High School, Hobart University, and Princeton University for over 20 years. And whereas Steve DiGregorio is a history teacher at Nutley High School since 2004. And...
Whereas Steve DiGregorio, or Coach D. as he is known in Nutley, coached the Nutley High School Raider football team for 10 seasons. And whereas Coach D. was recently diagnosed with pancreatic cancer and is undergoing extensive medical treatment. And whereas a group of Nutley citizens, coworkers, and friends organized a community group, Friends of Coach D., to assist Coach D. and his family with the financial hardships caused by his diagnosis and fight against cancer. And...
Whereas Friends of Coach D. have adopted the motto "Team Digger, We Got Your Back" as a show of support and love for Coach D. and his family. And whereas with great satisfaction that the Township of Nutley paid tribute to the overwhelming accomplishments of Steve DiGregorio for his many contributions to our community, school system, students, and athletes. And whereas the Nutley Board of Education, on behalf of the Township of Nutley, extends to Coach D. a heartfelt blessing for the strength, courage, and conviction to fight against this disease.
Now therefore be resolved by that the Nutley Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim that Saturday, October 19, 2019, be declared Coach D. Day for his contributions to our community, school system, and students and athletes of Nutley High School. And be further resolved that the Township of Nutley extended sincere thanks to Coach DiGregorio for his service to our community and pledged to support him and his fight against cancer.
We're glad that you guys are all here supporting Coach D. He has our prayers and our thoughts go with him. And Commissioners?
I just wanted to say that this is something that's quite personal to me. Coach, as you would tell your team, you know, "Fight." You know, stay strong, stay focused on your mission, and make sure that you cross the finish line successfully. I know it works. My prayers, myself, my family are all with you.
I'd just like to say that Coach DiGregorio is not only an outstanding coach, but he's an outstanding individual. The time and effort that he puts in each and every day with all of our students, not to mention our athletic programs, is unsurpassed by just about anyone else that I know. I want to wish him and his family nothing but the absolute best, and rest assured that this Board of Commissioners will be there to support him each and every step of the way.
I'd just like to add that I've had my own personal experiences with Coach D. To me, he is God-sent. A few years ago, my own son was having some health issues, and Coach D. would call me a couple times a week or stop by to Deli to see how my son was doing, and you all know what his own son is up against. And I would say to Coach D., "I should be asking you about your son, not vice versa." But that's his love and commitment, and my son was one of his students to this township. But to me, all of you being here, the coaches, all the students that played for him, that shows me what Nutley is all about. When I went through the school system here, we had our coaches. They weren't just our coaches, they were part of our families. And I run into them all the time, and the memories that you guys are making in standing up for Coach D. is very admirable to me, and that's what our town's about. Thank you.
Coach D. is not only somebody that I've known for many, many years. We played football together, we wrestled together. He went to Muhlenberg with one of my better friends, and I would see him at Muhlenberg. And, you know, I wish to see him back on those sidelines in that practice. So Coach Vick, you have anything you want to say?
Let's have a statement to read to Coach D. This is from Coach D. It says, "Thank you, Mayor Scarpelli, Commissioner Petracca, Evans, Tucci, and Rogers for this proclamation. I'm confident that I'm not worthy of this, but I'm very grateful and humbled by your thinking of me during this time. I've been blessed with having been raised in Nutley by my wonderful parents, Silvio and Rosemary, who were longtime contributors to Nutley, to the Nutley community. They instilled so many values and lessons to my sister, Linda, and me, and have been passed down to our own children. I'd like to accept this very special honor in my parents' memory. I loved Nutley. Everything about my childhood and adolescence was terrific and memorable. I'm deeply honored to be teaching history in the same building that I learned history. I'm deeply honored to be your head football coach, to a program that I was part of and helped shape so much of my formative years. Each day I try to make a difference. Some days I succeed, some days I do not. Because of the lessons and experience that the Nutley community taught me, I'll never stop trying to have an impact on my students, my players, and my colleagues. I'm a proud son of Nutley, and I've always remained one. Thank you for this honor." Thank you.
Coach, let's get Team Digger up here and take a picture.
Mara, I have two cousins, brothers, same family, both pancreatic cancer. Files up 158, 160. Within a year of one another? Three months. I was getting worried they weren't going to make it.
All right. Reports, Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, Mayor, I have a shade report for the month of September, 2019.
Commissioner Petracca?
I have my public safety report for September, 2019, as well.
Commissioner Evans?
I have a code enforcement report for the third quarter of this year, and I have a code enforcement report for about the same. I have them for the third quarter.
Bills, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Bill list for October 15, 2019. Public Affairs, $1,005,164.30. Revenue and Finance, $3,629,590.67. Public Safety, $58,694.11. Public Works, $175,262.09. Parks and Public Property, $121,901.20. Water Utility, $11,193.29. Overtime Payroll total is $37,032.97. Total payroll, $923,876.89, for a grand total of $5,025,682.55.
Move the bills. Also, I have a September report for the Code Department.
Second on the bills only, not the report.
Commissioner Tucci? Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for bills, Mayor.
Public comment on agenda items only. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of decorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioners on agenda items only? Seeing none, let's move on to ordinance introductions. Commissioner Petracca?
Yes, I have an introduction for ordinance number 3429, an ordinance to amend ordinances codified in the Code of Township of Nutley, Chapter 228, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, particularly Article 7, Special Zones and Areas, Section 29A, entitled Handicap Parking, to add to the location set forth thereon. You know why I'm missing my little paper on any of here to all the next meeting? Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, question?
I move that this ordinance be passed as second reading and advertise in Nutley Sun, together with the notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage be by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on... Where are we, November 19?
Yes, November 19.
Okay, on November 19. I move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Okay, my second one is, "In order to fix the salaries of certain officers and employees of Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, effective January 1, 2017, this is the Fire Department, FBN, FMBA, Local 44. I move that this ordinance be passed as second reading and advertise in Nutley Sun, together with the notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading. I'm assuming November 19 as well. I move the ordinance."
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Let's move on to public hearings. Commissioner Petracca?
Yes, thank you. This is public hearing 3427, in order to amend an ordinance codified in Township of Nutley, Chapter 228, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, particularly Articles, Section 14, parking prohibits certain hours for Brookfield Avenue. I move to open the public portion of the meeting.
Does anybody want to be heard on ordinance number 3427?
Seeing none. Move to close.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
I move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And my second public hearing is ordinance number 3428, in order to amend an ordinance codified in the Code of Township of Nutley, Chapter 228, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, particularly Article 7, Special Zones and Areas, Section 29A, entitled Handicap Parking, to remove the location set forth thereon by an equal place. I move to open the public hearing.
Anybody who want to be heard in ordinance number 3428?
Seeing none. Move to close.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
I move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let's go to resolutions. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to acquire specialized professional services as a fair and open contract pursuant to the provision of NJSA 19:44A-20.5, and whereas the requests for qualification for Township Forester were received and opened on Wednesday, September 25, 2019, and whereas the most responsible and responsive request for qualification was from the Shade Tree Department, LLC, John Linton, West Orange, New Jersey, and whereas the Shade Tree Department, John Linton, New Jersey, Certified Tree Expert, Number 198, has provided these services in the past to the Township of Nutley and is particularly suited to provide continued service. And whereas the term of this contract is for a one-year period commencing on October 1, 2019, and continuing through September 31, 2020, and whereas the contract is not to exceed $22,000, and funds are available from account 901512200 in the amount of $5,505, and 001512200 in the amount of $16,495, and the funds have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. Said certification being attached to this resolution now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that a contract be awarded to the Shade Tree Department, LLC, John Linton, as described herein. The response to the request for qualification be placed on file with this resolution, and a notice of this action shall be printed once in the Nutley Sun in accordance with the local public contracts law. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas Township of Nutley has a need to acquire specialized and professional ACA reporting services to ensure compliance with the IRS regulations for the year 2019 reporting, and whereas such services may be acquired as a non-fair and open contract pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 19:44A-20.4 or 20.5 as appropriate, and whereas Prime Point LLC, located at 2 Springdale Road, Mount Holly, New Jersey, has submitted a proposal dated September 27, 2019, with an anticipated cost of $7,050 to complete these services and assure compliance on behalf of the Township of Nutley, and where funds are available from budget account 901526200, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. Said certification being attached to this resolution. Whereas Prime Point LLC has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification which certifies Prime Point has not made any reportable contributions to a political or candidate committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous one year, and that the contract will prohibit Prime Point from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, hereby authorize the Commissioner of Parks and Public Property to enter into a contract with Prime Point LLC. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you. Whereas the law firm of Anglicina Webster Wiskala &amp; Taylor, 600 Persipony Road, Suite 204 Persipony, New Jersey, has been awarded a non-fair and open contract as a professional service as pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 19:44A-20.4 or 20.5 as appropriate to provide services to the Board of Commissioners as counsel for the Township of Nutley concerning compliance procedural and general legal issues. Whereas such services will exceed the contract amount of $35,000, and the following change order is needed. Change Order 1, provide legal services not to exceed $5,000. Whereas funds are available in account 901012205 and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. Said certification being attached to this resolution now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley. That change order 1 in the amount of $5,000 is hereby approved. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas the law firm of Pyros...
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas the law firm of Pyros Inis Afali Paris and Genetempo, three sixty Passaic Avenue, Nutley, has been awarded a non-fair and open contract as a professional service as pursuant to the provisions of NJSA nineteen colon forty-four A twenty dot four and twenty dot five as appropriate to provide services to the Code Enforcement Department in connection with the Township's land use policies and procedures. Whereas such services will exceed the contract amount of ten thousand dollars and the following change order is needed. Provide legal services not to exceed two thousand and five hundred dollars. Whereas funds are available in account nine oh one two two six two oh five and have been certified by the Chief, Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution and now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex State of New Jersey, that change order number one in the amount of two thousand and five hundred dollars be and is hereby approved. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley, County of Essex State of New Jersey, that Richard Mazitelli, an employee of the Department of Public Safety, be granted a medical leave by absence with pay effective, without pay effective October fifth, two thousand and nineteen through November fifth, two thousand and nineteen. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley, County of Essex State of New Jersey, that Meredith Donatello, an employee in the Department of Public Safety, be granted medical leave of absence without pay effective October fifth, two thousand and nineteen through November fifth, two thousand and nineteen. I move reso... ...resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
I'm going to pull this resolution two fifty-three nineteen because we were planning on purchasing this, but after talking to Commissioner Evans, we're going to look into perhaps leasing it as well. And I know everybody in my department did a stellar job, but it doesn't hurt to double check something. So I will move on to resolution two fifty-four dash nineteen. Whereas the duly authorized representatives from Township of Nutley in good faith have negotiated four-year collective bargaining agreement with FMBA Local forty-four and forty-four A, they represent for the term January first, two thousand and thirteen through December thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen. And whereas the agreement has been lawfully and properly ratified by the FMBA Local forty-four and forty-four A, and Nutley's authorized representatives have approved the Board of Commissioners, and whereas the FMBA Local forty-four and forty-four A seek to further extend the contract without salary increase, with a salary increase of two percent for additional year to December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen, and whereas the FMBA Local forty-four and forty-four A and the Board of Commissioners have approved and find in the best interest of the Township that the above-mentioned amendment to the agreement be executed. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, County of Essex State of New Jersey hereby authorize the extension of said agreement. I move the resolution.
Next.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. These, uh, these first two I will read are Commissioner Rogers' resolution. Whereas the Township of Nutley advertised for bids and received bid proposals inclusive of amendments for the collection, removal and disposal of all solid waste, bulk waste, vegetative waste and white goods, and pursuant to a fair and open process in accordance with NJSA forty A eleven dash one. Whereas bids were opened on Wednesday, October second, two thousand and nineteen, at eleven AM in the Township Hall, third floor, Commission Chambers. And whereas the Township wishes to award the contract to F. Bosso Jr. Rubbish and Removal as a successful bidder for a term of five years, five consecutive years, and whereas the Township of Nutley is awarding the contract to F. Bosso Jr. Rubbish Removal located at fifty-five dash ninety-three South Twentieth Street, Irvington, New Jersey, for a term of five years commencing on November first, two thousand and nineteen through October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. Whereas in consideration of full and proper performance by the contractor of its obligations of collection, removal and disposal, the Township agrees to pay to the contractor the total five-year sum of four million, one hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars for collection, removal and transportation for disposal of all collected items for solid waste, bulk waste and white goods as per the specifications. Whereas further in consideration for the collection, removal and transportation for disposal of all vegetative brush leaves and grass clippings for the proper performance by contractor for its obligations, Township agrees to pay the contractor a monthly sum of eleven thousand, two hundred for the period from each April fifteenth through December fifteenth annually for the full period of this contract up through October twenty twenty-four for the total sum of five hundred, four thousand dollars. Whereas funds are available and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer as follows. Funds are available from account number nine dash oh one one thirty-eight two hundred, account number nine oh one six sixteen two hundred to cover the periods November first, two thousand and nineteen through December thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen. Funds will be provided in account number nine oh one one thirty-eight two hundred and account nine oh one six six, six sixteen two hundred in each of two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four, sufficient to meet the terms of the contract was certified by the Chief Financial Officer prior to the adoption of the budget. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, County of Essex, New Jersey, that a contract be awarded to F. Bosso Jr. Rubbish Removal located at fifty-five South Twentieth Street, Irvington, New Jersey, in the amount not to exceed the accumulated five-year total of four million, six hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, and that the Mayor and the Township Clerk are hereby authorized to enter into a signed set contract on behalf of the Township of Nutley. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved that the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley, County of Essex State of New Jersey approve a shared services agreement with the Nutley Board of Education for solid waste removal by F. Bosso Jr. Rubbish Removal for which the Township will reimburse the yearly amount of twelve thousand, five hundred dollars for a period of five years commencing November first, two thousand and nineteen through October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley, County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the Township Clerk is hereby authorized to rescind resolutions one seventy-eight nineteen, which was originally read on July second, two thousand and nineteen, and authorized to advertise for sealed bids for NJDLT Grant Avenue Roadway Improvement Project in the Township of Nutley to be received on behalf of the Board of Commissioners in the Commission Chambers Township Hall, One Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey on Wednesday, November sixth, two thousand and nineteen, at eleven AM prevailing time, at which time they will be open and read.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley, County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned licenses are approved, the Municipal Clerk is authorized to issue the raffle license. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley, County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the Township Clerk is hereby authorized to rescind resolutions one seventy-eight nineteen, which was originally read on July second, two thousand and nineteen, and authorized to advertise for sealed bids for NJDLT Grant Avenue Roadway Improvement Project in the Township of Nutley to be received on behalf of the Board of Commissioners in the Commission Chambers Township Hall, One Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey on Wednesday, November sixth, two thousand and nineteen, at eleven AM prevailing time, at which time they will be open and read.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas Paul Ricky of Ricky Planning, Ten Georgian Way, Clark Road, Clark Road, New Jersey, the designated planner for the Township has been awarded a non-fair and open contract as professional service as pursuant to provisions of NJSA nineteen colon forty-four A twenty point four or twenty point five as appropriate to provide supplemental planning service, and whereas such services will exceed the contract amount of five thousand dollars and the following change order is needed. Change Order number one, provide planning services not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars, whereas funds are available from account number T twenty-six nine oh nine nine oh two and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. Said certification be attached to this resolution now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, County of Essex State of New Jersey, that change order number one in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars be and is hereby approved and be resolved.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley, County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the Township Clerk is hereby authorized to advertise for sealed bids for the two thousand and twenty acceptance of recycling vegetative waste to include leaf and grass clippings to be received on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, Commission Chambers Township Hall, One Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey on Wednesday, November thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen, at eleven AM prevailing time, at which time they will be open and read. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley, County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the Township Clerk is hereby authorized to advertise for sealed bids for the two thousand and twenty acceptance of recycling vegetative waste to include leaf and grass clippings to be received on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, Commission Chambers Township Hall, One Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey on Wednesday, November thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen, at eleven AM prevailing time, at which time they will be open and read. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of the quorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
I'm just, I'm just here to address you relative to what I talked, I spoke about about two or three weeks ago about a variance that was issued for Nutley Avenue. I just want to thank you. At any rate, I do have a copy of the ordinance. And the ordinance, and I want you to know ahead of time that I have no animosity toward the people who live there or anything like that, and that's not my purpose. But secondly, I just want to say that the variance that was issued prior to the building of the house in two thousand and three, the reference in the variance was relative to the building envelope, which I came to find is essentially the footprint of the house itself. Okay? And because the property was irregular, certain conditions were allowed because of depth and frontage and all this other stuff, which is what was actually, that's what the ordinance was for. It had nothing to do with a... It did, it does indicate in the ordinance and it's underlined in great yellow letters, and it says that a patio, but not a deck, would be installed in the rear yard, and it's in, in yellow. So I just want to bring that to your attention, that I was told that a COO was issued, and it was issued probably erroneously, but at this point they can't do anything. And I helped who was in building in another town look at this.
I was told by the town, you know, your building person.
Sure. So, Mrs. Bosso, thank you. I'm glad you had a good experience in, in the office. That's what they're there for, and they're there to help. The, it's not a deck, it's an elevated patio, as it's defined by me, which does not violate its, the building envelope or the qualifications for a CO. I'm sorry. It's a, it's defined as an elevated patio, not a deck. All right? So you're referring to it as...
But it's raised, and a patio was level and a...
No, it's not.
That's what I was told by all building people, that a patio...
Not by, not by my building official, and it's not just the way the code is laid out. It's an elevated patio, it's not a deck, and it's allowed in that use, in that zone. And, and I asked that question because after listening to you, I wanted to know myself, and I, and what I was told was that it's defined as an elevated patio, not a deck. I don't, and it's a concrete structure, it's not made out of wood or elevate or, or other uses. It's a, it's a permanent solid piece of, of, for lack of a better word, concrete.
I was told that, that we're building by not the town, not... The purposes of building in order to clarify, you know, a patio is not a deck and a deck is not a patio as far as, you know, for building purposes.
I don't know who you spoke to, but according to our building official, our, our building official, it's acceptable.
No, I, I spoke to him, and I know exactly what he said. He said that a COO was probably erroneously issued, and, but at this point there's nothing they could do. But I just wanted to bring that...
Did, you're saying Dave Barry, the construction official in Nutley, said that it was erroneously issued? Is that what you're saying? Or are you telling me that a building inspector that you spoke to or building construction person in another town who does this work told you that it was erroneously issued?
I didn't real, I can't hear you too well. You're not talking...
Yeah. We're working on the mics. We're working, we're doing our best to work on the mics.
Sorry.
Just as a point of clarification, so for my benefit, were you told by Dave Barry, the Township of Nutley construction official, that a CO was erroneously issued? Or were you told that by another person?
No, he said it was, Dave told me that it was probably erroneous. He didn't say it was. He said it was probably erroneous, but it happened way before him, and he had no jurisdiction over that.
Sure. I will speak to him first thing in the morning because that's not my understanding. And I also, I just checked, checked on your original point where you had indicated that you had a three-family that you're not allowed to use as a three-family, right?
I, I clarified that with him. I, he was, he said I had, I...
You were granted, I was surprised, you were, you actually were granted a variance[1507.05] You actually were granted a variance in the year 2000.
Right. But the point is, it's very, very costly.
I appreciate that. That's a personal choice, but...
Right. But I can make it into, you told me, a part of the second tier.
Yes, there are ways that you can expand the use to change your economics for that property that still retains the two-family. I just wanted to check for your benefit, you know, whether or not there was something in the file related to a variance, and I was actually surprised to see that it was granted.
It was, yeah, but we never followed through on it because I had all the whatever...
Yeah, I was just trying to clarify because you had said that you couldn't do it.
Like $1,000, you know, it's not worth it.
I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
My name is Ted LaStrange. I'm not a resident. I've not been. My address is 43 Prospect Hill Road, Cardi Backville, that's New York. And I don't have good news, I'm afraid, and I've been titled as genocide by scalpel because that's a title given by one of the investigators into force organ harvesting in China. Your updated research concludes China's hospitals transplant between 60,000 and 100,000 vital human body organs each year. China has no real organ donation program. Here in the U.S., where the most sophisticated organ transplant system of the world, patients wait two to three years just for a matching organ to become available. In China, the waiting time is measured in weeks. An organ transplant tourist to China, including Wafang Nutley, can arrange a specific date for their operation. And that effectively means that someone will be dispatched on their behalf on that date. It's a cultural taboo to donate one's organs after death in China. Force of all these organs. Translation of these facts equates to tens of thousands of prisoners of conscience each year who hold their organs. Most of these prisoners of conscience are Falun Gong practitioners, but also Tibetans, Uighurs, and Hoss Christians. They're routinely blood tested and all is examined while held in China's forced labor camps, detention centers, and black jails. I have a quote, "On June 13th, 2016, the U.S. House of Representatives unanimously passed Resolution 343, which in its summary section, quote, 'condends the practice of state-sanctioned force organ harvesting in China.'" People's Republic of China, close quote. European Parliament has also passed similar resolutions. This has been happening for about 20 years. On this issue, and that's why I come before you, the elected and respected representatives of the United States, to welcome the heavy burden of this genocide as acknowledged by the House. China has total control of its own media and way beyond it. So it comes down to word of mouth. Many dedicated researchers have gathered an enormous amount of data from current and high hospital websites, local media reports, some phone surveys, and other evidence for the over 1,000 hospitals in China that have performed these organ transplants. Some books are now being written and documentaries have been produced with more comprehensive information, so I brought along a little package materials for your presentation. Thank you very much for your...
Thank you. Give it to them. Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Joan Ravino, 48 North Road. You said you were working on the mics. I couldn't understand one word that man said. You'd really better get with it because what's the point of coming to these meetings if we can't hear a thing that's being said? I couldn't hear Maria either. So I don't know, what are you doing with the mics? You said you're working on it.
We have upgraded mics. Excuse me.
We have upgraded mics here. I don't know what's being done with that one.
Maybe it's the sound system around us that is not working?
They're talking.
Yeah, well...